Sorry, I sprained my click. So I didn't click it hard enough. Okay, sorry. Close that button there, but I wait till this comes up, right?
Okay.
He was talking to him, he was talking to me, he was going all over.
It works, it works this way.
Okay, Mayor, it's 6:00 PM now.
I call this meeting to order for March 9th, 2021. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Richard Boss.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald. She's muted. You're muted. Can I unmute her?
We know you're here.
Okay. Commissioner Josh Rarden.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Payne.
Here.
Commissioner Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Baldwin. City Manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
City Attorney Patricia Bengoche.
Here.
The Deputy Clerk is present. And Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Teresa. We, I have down Commissioner McDonald was going to do our indication. Commissioner McDonald, can you hear us? And we can, we hear her? We can't hear her? I'm going to ask that Commissioner Payne, would you lead the indication, please?
Sure.
And if you'll remain standing, please, Mr. Baldwin will lead, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Lord Jesus, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time, Lord, that we can come together, Lord, and do the business of the city, Lord. Lord, I pray over our citizens, each and every one of them, Lord, in this city, and I pray for abundant blessings, Lord. I pray that you would just watch over each and every one of us, Lord, and as we go through this meeting, Lord, and, and we discuss the business, Lord, give us some open ears, open hearts, and, and give us the word to speak, and we ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Move on to approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
A motion.
A motion from two people. I have a motion from Commissioner Payne. Do I add to approve the agenda as presented? Do I hear a second? I have a second from Commissioner Baldwin. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye? Motion passes. The agenda is approved. Move on now to presentations. This evening, we have a presentation on Otero County Economic Development Council quarterly report. We have Lori Anderson with us this evening, who is the interim executive director. Lori, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Sykes. And Commissioners, thank you for having me today and allowing me to give an update. I am going to set my timer because last time I was too...
And she's frozen.
Share me?
I can now.
Oh, no. Okay.
We got you now.
No. Okay. All right, so, um, am I able to share my screen?
Yes.
Am I able to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's see here. So I'm just going to go ahead and move on to the projects that we have available. And again, this was for this last quarter. What we've seen in the past few months is that we're seeing a lot of project leads that are coming through the state of New Mexico, as well as our, we have, as we mentioned the last meeting, we had hired a site select, a site location, a site location consultant who basically goes out there and, and meets with people who are looking at expanding, relocating their business with brokers, again, with those particular businesses and specific industries. With that particular company, we have seen, we have been working on massive email, a solution, a solution, ah, excuse me, I'm sorry. We are starting a massive campaign, marketing campaign, part of that is with emails. The other part is brochures that we're providing these companies, and a big factory is what we put together is a visual tour of Alamo Gordo. We put a commercial together. It actually consists of one main commercial and then six commercials that branch off of that. We, we put, we picked out several people in the community who are the leaders of our community, who are instrumental in moving projects forward. And with that, thank you, Mayor Boss, for participating with that. I was hoping to have that commercial available for you to review today, but unfortunately, there was a few tweaks that we needed to do, and, and so hopefully by next week, I'll be able to send that to you. But with that being said, you're going to see the different projects that we have listed here. The top three projects were actual projects that we had going on for that particular quarter. I do want to tell you that we do have, with the Project Oasis, we are still working with the state of New Mexico in regards to that. There's some, some technical difficulties with this particular project that we're trying to work through. The Project Fresh with the bottling production, that particular one was held until the elections were completed. And with that being said, it's not likely that this project is going to move forward. If it does, it will probably be the third quarter, third or fourth quarter of this year. And the project fee, as some, some of them again, and are through our consultant, and the other one is through the New Mexico partnership. With this, just to kind of give you a brief overview of that, these particular companies, I'm finding more and more that they're looking for anywhere between 20,000 or 35,000, 40,000 square feet facilities. In some instances, they just want a warehouse, others they're looking for significant office space. With that, we, we have very limited inventory in regards to these particular requests. However, can to sell what we do have available, but if not, we, we provide them information in regards to how low, ideal locations for them to build their particular business. I'm hoping that within the next three months or so, that we're going to be able to work on some additional commercial property that we'll be able to sell in regards to these, in regards to these different leads and these different projects that we have available. I do want to tell you about one project that we have, that we are currently working on. It is something that we've been working on for a while, but then it was put on hold, and now it's brought back into visiting Alamo Gordo again. And with that being said, we have made the shortlist in regards to this particular project, and the project's name is Project Gold. The fact that we are competing with Los Cruces for this particular project, I'll tell you that we are the front runner. At this point in time, we have the ideal location of where they want. Again, just primarily more for the people who are sitting in on our, on, on this meeting today. Again, we do give code names to these particular projects for, for the confidentiality of our clients. For whatever reason that they're needing to have it confidential, we have to give it a project name. This particular project name is Project Gold. I'll tell you that our client has done everything in their possible way of protecting their identity in regards until they, until the ink dries on the particular, on this property. With that being said, I can tell you that the property owners and the client has agreed to the purchase price of the location. At this point in time, our client has already provided a purchase agreement to the client, to the property owner. They just passed it on, they passed it on to their counsel. And so we're just waiting to hear back from that. And so at that point, we will be able to provide a little bit more additional information. What I can tell you, it is, it would, the employment number would be 125 jobs. It is something that Alamo Gordo is a primary location, and the Alamo Gordo is a primary location of this property, I mean, this project. We're very excited about it. I have been in contact with Brian from, from the very first phone call. I mentioned in more good news, I can tell you that the client is already looking at the latest state leader, as well as day tip, and depending on what that ask is going to be, we will probably come back, depending on how things work out, we will be coming back to the city of Alamo Gordo as well. So currently, we are currently not traveling still. It does look like trade shows and sales missions are coming back to, they're starting to plan them again, and so it looks like they're going to be coming back late July, early August. So tentatively, we're looking at attending some of these sales missions, especially the ones that are targeted with, that fall in alignment with the, the marketing efforts that we have been working towards, and hopefully meeting those people. We are still limited in our person, in-person visits. We have a ton of electronic communication going now, still working with the partnerships with the SBDC, the Chamber, and of course, the city of Alamo Gordo. Our marketing efforts have, have probably tripled since we signed on with our consultant, GSLI, with the sites, site locator. And we're moving on with our commercials. And of course, we're doing business retention and expansion, helping those businesses, primarily the first two quarters of this year, we were working with businesses, trying to get them to move forward with whether it's funding opportunities, the recovery resources. How can we best line them up that's going to help them be successful when we're, we're over this hump that we're in with the COVID-19? And OCTC is New Mexico Safe Certified. With the Film Office, we are filming, it's kind of not in the forefront, but we're still working with different opportunities that have any type of solicitation that we have received on our end. I know that our, the students, the Film Office is providing, the NMFAU and the Film Office is providing educational opportunities to students that they can come on through Zoom. And we are working on the 2021 Film Festival, which is going to all be held virtually. These students are working extremely hard to get their videos in, and it's very important to them. And so we're trying to do the best that we can to be able to move this particular event forward for these students. And the marketing collateral piece, these are the different marketing pieces that are put out into our, that are sent out locally, as well as to our people that we're looking at, trying to engage with and bring in this conversation to us, bringing Alamo Gordo to their attention and how we can help assist them. And one thing that we're working on, that we're very active in, is legislative priorities. We're trying to stay on top of the things that are going to affect businesses in Alamo Gordo and in Otero County. And then this is just basically the different, the different posts that we have, the number posts that we have available that we put out into our different social media sites, just to make sure that we're hitting our demographics across the board. And I know that was super fast, and I probably missed something, but I really wanted to hit on the, the thing that was most important, and it was the project that we have going on. And if you have any questions, I'd be, I'd stand for questions right now.
Anyone have a question? Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes, thank you, Lori. You cut out a little bit in there, but thank you for getting in under the 15 minutes. I feel like I'm the one that always makes a big deal out of that, and always a good presentation, anyway. Two comments or one question in a comment. Even though you were able to show us your slideshow, the presentation was with our agenda packet. And I appreciate the new analytics at the end of the report. That's a new touch, seeing all that information, information on the website, Facebook. That's kind of nice. My question was, you've been with OCTC long enough to kind of know, did you see a slowdown in economic development-related traffic through COVID, or did it just shift as far as how they communicated with you?
Um, I, I think it shifted. I, I think that we had a lot, um, it'll get, let's get a little bit more specific. Are you speaking specifically to people who are looking at possibly relocating? Or are you looking at more locally?
Probably a combination of both. I, I guess I'm just trying to look for a a summarization of what happened over the last 10, 10 months. Are businesses starting to slow down and protect themselves and say, you know what? We're not going to go look for sites. We're just going to wait to see how all this pans out, whether locally or, you know, out of state. I mean, you guys generally don't deal with a lot of local stuff, but you know what I mean? Or are they still pushing? Are they still looking for places to open?
Well, and, and it's probably not really a great thing to say, but when you're looking at these other companies who are, who fall in the criteria of the, the businesses that, industries that we're in that, they were actually looking for places to move. Because they're finding out more and more that their employees can work from home, so it's not necessarily that they need the infrastructure of, of a facility that holds 30 offices. And so they're finding more and more that because of that, they're wanting to move. And then when we were in the midst of having, especially in the urban areas where they had riots, they're like, well, we don't want to be here. So we saw a big shift of those businesses moving out from those locations and finding and putting homes in, you know, their, their offices in, in different areas. And so economic development didn't really stop. It was put on pause primarily because of the election. And, and that was probably the constant thing that we heard at that point. And then they wanted to, so the challenge that we've had it right now is the fact that New Mexico is closed. And so how, you know, so I try, whenever they would come to me about New Mexico being closed, I try to reroute it to the fact that, well, this gives us time to find you the right location, build the, the building that you're looking for. And by that time, yeah, hopefully we'll be in a better position to be able to put those employees back to work. And so it, it was kind of a I'll tell you, a lot of it had to deal with the fact of, a lot of it had to deal with the fact of the, the election.
That's good insight. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Lori, thank you very much for the presentation. We really appreciate you taking the time to do that. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Evening.
You too. We'll move on to public comment. Teresa, did we have anyone in public comment for this meeting?
Yes, we had one public comment from citizen Elise Haley. And what Elise wanted to write about was a bridge over the Arroyo to access the hospital from the university addition. And she writes, "I realize budgeting is a problem always, and especially now. People living on such as Princeton, Westminster, Harvard, and such have a difficult time accessing the hospital in emergency situations. Ambulances usually have to go west to Pecan, north to Fairgrounds Road, east to back entrance of the hospital. This will become more difficult when the new junior high will start construction and open for students. Another route used some is east on 25th, south on Cornell, east on Indian Wells, then north on Scenic. This puts the ambulance going through a dangerous intersection at the entrance of the neighborhood Walmart. It also is roundabout, adding travel time. A bridge over the Arroyo in the vicinity of 25th and Cornell will help. Current routes add precious minutes to the transport, minutes that could be critical. I know this was brought up years ago and was shot down. I have a personal history with the reasons for that. People who stopped it are no longer part of the situation. I am an example. I had to be transported sometime back, and the ambulance had to take me roundabout. The bridge could be designated for emergency only, and it's signed Elise Haley, citizen."
Thank you, Teresa. We'll move on to city manager's report. Our city manager, Brian Caesar, do you have a report for us, Brian?
Yes, I'm sure Rachel thought I was going to forget this tonight. The Sunday is daylight savings time once again, so this will be our last meeting at 6 o'clock. The next meeting on the 23rd will be at 6:30. Last week on Tuesday, a number of staff members, we participated in the public hearing for the PRC, before the hearing officer. It lasted a little over 15 minutes. We had a number of residents of Alamo Gordo that spoke in favor of the project. We didn't have anyone that spoke against it. There were a number of questions that were asked by the hearing officer, and we provided those answers. This doesn't give us the green light to move forward with the project, so the hearing officer now will make his recommendation to the PRC board, who will meet now in roughly two weeks. And then we'll get a answer in writing after, after they consider the request. So at this point, we're not moving forward, obviously with the bidding process, acquiring the right of way, et cetera, until we get that, hopefully we get that approval from the, from the PRC. Wednesday of last week, we had the regional commander for the Corps of Engineers for the Corps of Engineers, South Ditch Project, that's been ongoing now for longer than I've been alive. They are, the contractor now is roughly one year away from, from completing the southern channel. There's only one more utility line that needs to be relocated that's in conflict of the, of the channel by the debris basin, top of Thunder Road. But that project is actually moving ahead, moving forward ahead of schedule. And last but not least, this Thursday, up at Benito Lake, the different section of the Corps of Engineers, our engineer, the contractor, and various city staff will be meeting up at Benito Lake to have what should be the second to last meeting. All the debris that was approved by FEMA has been removed. The contractor now is beginning demobilization, getting his equipment and, and whatnot out of the area. That doesn't mean that we'll now be looking at the summer to reopen camping up at Benito Lake. Actually, I think we have, yeah, we have the second reading tonight for the NMFA loan. And that's the loan that we were finally able to secure to make the needed improvements to the intake tower, and also to address the deficiencies that we had on the dam facing and the spillway that the New Mexico Dam Safety Bureau has identified for multiple years. That project, once it does go out to bid, is a 14-month project, I believe, 14 or 16-month project. So obviously, the lake will need to be, still be drained to, to perform that work. But once that nears completion, we'll, staff will be looking at what do we do with the campground areas, bring a phase plan, excuse me, a phase plan to commission on how we would like to see the area reopened. And obviously, funding will be, will be part of, part of the issue and what we bring forward to commission. And that is all I have.
And this is probably not the appropriate time to ask this, probably later on. Do we have any projections as to how long it's going to take for that lake to come back up to a reasonably full level?
Um, if we let the flow go into the lake today, we would have the lake overtopping the spillway within probably a week and a half to two. It, it, it's going to depend, it'll definitely depend on the time of year that, that we take the water back into the lake. So if it's the, you know, the, the middle of summer, it's obviously going to take longer. If it's the middle of winter, it's going to take a little longer. Right now, with the, the warmer temperatures, the thaw that's going on, flows are highest right around this time of year.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. We'll move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Do any commissioners have any comments they would like to make?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Riden.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I brought it up before in the past, but, you know, we're on our, our one-year anniversary of our two-week flatten the curve sometime in the, this week, if I'm not mistaken. But I, I think, I don't know how the rest of y'all feel, but I, I kind of feel we should have staff start putting a plan together about having our meetings in person again. I don't feel we should have stopped having them in person, the, you know, the state legislature's able to convene up there in person, do all of their stuff, and here we are for a year. We've been sitting here doing them over Zoom, and, and I mean, tonight was a classic example when Lori was giving her presentation. You know, I heard about every other word. It was cutting in and out real bad, and I think
Me too.
for everybody, you know, but I didn't, didn't know if we could maybe start having staff look at a plan, put it together, how we do it, you know, how we could get the, the, the public involved back in the meetings and that kind of stuff, you know, and start having them down at City Hall like we used to.
I think that's a great idea myself personally.
I, I do.
I agree with you totally on that.
I'm, I'm tired of doing them like this, you know what I mean?
You, you and me both, and I have the same exact problem, not just this meeting, but in prior meetings that we've had.
Every meeting.
They, they mute out, and they're gone. You can't only hear half of what's going on, and, you know, and you can't figure out, you re-watch it again, and it's still the same way. It was recorded that way too, so.
Exactly.
I think it's a great idea, of course.
Okay, well, you know, I, I talked to the city clerk the other day. I'd stopped in City Hall for the first time in a long time, and, and I think she's going to be out that first meeting in April, but, you know, maybe look at it, maybe that second meeting in April, potentially coming back into actual real session, figure out how we're going to do it. I mean, that gives us a month and a half to two months, but figure out how we're going to do it, how we're going to meet all the state's guidelines, you know, and, and maybe contact the state and say, okay, you know, because the state legislature, you'd see pictures of them up there. They're, they're not social distancing. They may all be wearing their masks, but they're, they're not, they're not staying apart. They're still having their meetings, and they're conducting the, the official business of the state, and, and that's what we need to be able to do. We need to be able to get back down there to the dais and, and conduct the business in public the way it's supposed to be.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Mayor Pro Tem Sykes.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I, I just had one of these little tidbits to think about. I had a recent conversation with a constituent, not in my district, but actually in Jason's With a constituent, not in my district, but actually in Jason's district and Commissioner Baldwin's district. She had a, a severe leak under her house. And in my conversation with her, I asked her if she knew about our feature called Aqua Hawk. And maybe I accessed the, the website and the Facebook page. A lot more than other people. I tried to, and the profile. I tried to incorporate a lot of the information that the city provides and they do a great job. In the radio shows that I do on Mondays and Wednesdays. And I hear a lot of compliments as a result of talking about it, about the feature called Aqua Hawk. I, I don't know if any of you are signed up for that, but it's a, a pretty interesting feature where you can. You can set your thresholds with regard to your water usage. And should you use more water than you have set the thresholds for. You are alerted either by text, by phone, or by email. And the woman I was speaking with asked me a question and I thought, well, that makes sense. She said, why isn't that required? Of every water customer in Almagordo. Everybody should have the, should be told about it when they sign up for water and then be required to do it. Because leaks can be extremely inconvenient. So I just thought I'd throw that out there and see if we could. Maybe talk to the water utility staff and see if that's something that we could go forward with. And then just continue hammering the information because it's such a good feature.
Anyone else have any comments? Commissioner Payne.
Yes, yes. Okay. What, actually what I found out Mayor Pro Tim Sykes is it's not required to get water service. It is required if you're asking for a leak abatement. You cannot get a leak abatement until you sign up for Aqua Hawk. So it really would behoove everybody. To do that. And you're right, it is a great feature. Having had a leak under my house, I check my water bill very carefully every month now. And I am a fanatic about it. So I agree. It's because something like that is very devastating. A couple of things. Number one, I had the opportunity to sit in on a meeting for the Housing Authority yesterday. With HUD and I won't go into great detail. I will just tell you that it was very informative. And hopefully we're going to start seeing some kind of a report. I think Stephanie's going to work it out and get some kind of report every month. About housing. But it was very informative and I'm only sharing that with you because I feel like my fellow commissioners need to know that. I think it's good that we talk and since it's the only time we get to talk, I wanted to share that with you. So it's very informative meeting. Number two, I kind of wanted to address what Commissioner Reardon said. I don't disagree with you that it's time to get back to business. I, I don't know that it should be incumbent upon staff to figure this out. Because I don't know if there's a way to figure it out. There's a lot of us. There's seven of us and then there's. The city clerk and of course we, if we're going to meet in person, we probably should have Chief Denton there or something and. And so there's a lot of us and I don't know that it's going to be feasible. I mean, certainly we could check in. I just, I, I'm thinking maybe we need to be more proactive. If we want to meet as a commission, maybe we need to help participate in that because I don't know that it's really incumbent upon staff to. To totally figure that out themselves. I think that's putting them in a sticky position because. Then we're asking staff members that may not be comfortable. Right now, I, at some point, everybody's just going to have to get comfortable with it because it's just going to be a fact of life, right? We're going to open up. I hope. I hope. I will tell you, and I, and I'm going to say this, these are my personal feelings. And do not necessarily reflect those of my fellow commissioners, but I'm going to say it anyway. I want to encourage people to write our legislatures, to write the governor's office, to send emails, to do. Whatever it is we need to do to make. The, to make Santa Fe aware that we're here and that we don't like being closed down like this. Now, if you, if you're happy with it, then okay, that's great. We do have to represent all our citizens, the ones that agree with us and the ones that don't. But it has been a year and this is getting really, really old and we need to. We need to start doing whatever we need to do to, to make it clear that we're tired of it. As far as I'm concerned. With this color coded system. I, I, and, and being, being a border city and all of the states around us opening up. I just, I don't, I don't, I, I, I'm not seeing light at the end of the tunnel and it's just simply not fair. It just isn't. Our cases are very low and they're not, they may not meet the, the gating criteria or whatever it is, but our cases are. Hold on, hold on, just one second. I, I, I don't, I'm not trying to start an argument. I'm not, I'm just speaking my mind because quite frankly, I'm fed up with it. And, and, and I'm using commissioner comments to do it, so. But, and I know that they're, they're opening schools as of April and I'm hoping that we see something different in the future, but what I've seen is nothing but hypocrisy. And I'm fed up with it. It's absolute one hundred percent hypocrisy. And so I would just encourage anybody that's watching this that is tired of it or anybody that's watching this. I know a lot of people watch our meeting. In hopes that we're going to say something or that we're going to have some kind of insight and how to get our city open. And I know that they're watching it for that reason because I get those comments all the time. So I would just encourage anybody that's watching. Email the governor's office, write the governor's office, call the governor's office. If you're not happy with it, as a citizen, you need to be proactive. In, in making your voice heard because it's the only way we're going to get our city back open and we need to open the city. I don't disagree with you. This city needs to be back open. This is positively ridiculous and personally. I'm tired of it and I, I do fear for our businesses and, and. And so anyway, I'm, that's, that's my take on that. I see nothing but hypocrisy in Santa Fe and quite frankly, I think it's shameful and. And so if you want to be part of the solution, if you're tired of it, please get involved, please. And that's all I have to say on that one.
Yes, I had to comment, but I'm going to yield to Mayor Pro Tim Nadia because this could be interesting.
I, I just have a really brief comment about this. I appreciate the, the suggestion that the staff look into a way that we could potentially open up. But I for one would appreciate if the staff would also look into the possibility of continuing the Zoom meetings. Until the, till Otero County and the state has reached the. The color level that we need to reach because I for one will not attend a meeting if we choose to open up. Without having reached the threshold that I believe would be safe. Secondly, last Thursday, our zip code eight eight three one zero had the highest number of cases in the county. So whether you think the numbers are going down, that isn't, that isn't correct. The numbers are staying pretty, pretty, pretty stayed, which is why. Otero County has been pushing the, the, the testing sites and the. The added testing abilities. So we're trying to work the numbers. We're trying to test as many people as possible, but please know that the Department of Health is not saying that our numbers are getting better. In fact. We are one of the red states continuously and Dona Anna just went back to red. So we just need to keep that in mind and should the staff look into this, I would appreciate. Being able to continue doing Zoom meetings until we're at the point at which everybody feels safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldwin, you had comment?
Yeah, kind of in, in relationship to what we've been talking about, about Commissioner Reardon's comments. I'm not even sure where I sit on the dais. Like I was trying to remember where, where my position was or where my nameplate was. I can't even remember. So I am. Yeah, right next to you. Okay, perfect. A couple of months ago, I'd asked the commission to support a letter to our representatives asking. Our representatives to take a look at the health order in the. The authority given a sitting governor under the health order. Our city attorney, Petria, she did some research and put a letter together. After making a few changes in a, you know, about to bring it forward, knowing that probably nothing's going to get done till next year. I did a little extra research. And I found that there were already a couple of bills. Thank goodness, great minds think alike, but I wanted to give them to you for research. Senate Bill seventy four and House Bill one fifty nine. Were basically asking the same thing that, that we had talked about, you know, taking a look at. What the authorities are, how long they can be extended, yeah, how long they can be extended. What happens if it reaches a certain timeframe? Who, who needs to? Be the authoritative figure from that point to extend it even further. So again, hopefully it's because great minds think alike and. There was already something presented by other, you know, legislators. So again, it was Senate Bill seventy four and House Bill one fifty nine. So that task that I asked of our commission was seen to by. Other senators and representatives and things like that. So I just want to let you know, we didn't forget about it. It was just already done, so.
Got to make a comment on that as well. I was at a, a function, I don't know, a few months back. And, you know, I was talking to Senator Griggs and Senator Burke and I asked him, how are you guys able to be in session up there? And they said, well, governing bodies are exempt from the health order. So we haven't had to do our meetings via Zoom this whole time. Could have, even though we don't meet the criteria, we're over groups of five. The state legislature is over a group of five and they're up there meeting right now in person. So there are ways around it. We just, we just got to brainstorm and figure out how to do it. You know, if we do every other chair on the dais, put a couple of us in the back, every other chair, you know, make sure the six feet or do Plexiglas, whatever we got to do. But it, it's just time, you know, I, I kind of feel the same way Commissioner Payne feels. It's, it's, I'm tired of it. It's. It's, it's been a year to flatten the curve that was supposed to take two weeks, you know, and, and it, it's just time. You know what I mean? I'm not, not here to argue with anybody or starting fights or anything, but it's, it's time to just say enough is enough and, and let's go about our business. You know, Otero County's been doing their meetings in person the whole time. I think Roswell over there, I believe they've been doing theirs in person the whole time, so. But just.
Well, Mayor, first I would like to apologize for the, the prayer today because I was prepared. For some reason, my computer decided it was not going to move and so I had to go to another one. And when I touched the button here, I ended up losing everything. So. I do apologize for not being on the, the prayer this afternoon or this evening.
Save, save that for next meeting though.
Okay, I, I wanted to bring up something because. I have been talking to a couple of my constituents in the area and they are wanting to move on some things. Within the area to help improve it. And so tonight I am going to ask the commission to authorize the city staff to engage in discussing. Using the guide of the MOU between the Historical Society and the city for the goal for a possible purchase. And restoration of the Dudley School on the corner of Maryland and Sixth Street. So we would like to, you know, have that approval and hopefully just regain. Some of the, the time we have lost to see what can be done. And the second one, and I said, I just wanted to make sure that I am expressing. Some of the things that the people are asking for in this district and of course it's not just for district number five, but. It includes the whole city. We would also like for the baseball field between fifth and seventh on Florida. It has sat vacant for many a year and so we're asking the commission to allow the city staff to inquire. Of Gerald Champion Regional Medical Center. If they would be interested in allowing the city to purchase. That property and reuse that as a park area for people in the neighborhood. So those are my two requests for Dudley School and also for the, the baseball park. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager Brian Caesar.
Okay, you gave me a whole list of stuff tonight, so I just want to get a little clarification, so. Staff members aren't doing work that we don't need to be doing. Let me start with the, the two requests from Commissioner McDonald. Right now, we do not have an MOU with the Historical Society. So I'm, what I'm assuming you're asking for is for the city to reach out to the Historical Society. To come to an agreement that would go before the commission concerning. The Dudley School, the purchase of the property rehab rehabilitation. Is that correct? Okay, I think you're saying yes, but you're, you're muted.
You're muted.
I, I'm sorry. I thought, you know, I thought the city had an MOU with the Historical Society. So using the guide of an MOU, yes.
Okay, and then your, your second request for. Definitely staff wise, we can reach out to Gerald Champion to see if they're interested in selling the property. And what that price tag may be. But this would typically, typically be something that we brought before commission during the budgetary process. Which is, I think, just a couple of months. So is that an acceptable timeframe? If the, if the, if the hospital is interested in selling the property. To bring that forward to commission as part of the budgetary process if funding is available because it's not just going to be purchasing the property. There's going to be. Utility line extensions, there would be. Community services would need to look at. Would the, would the park have a pavilion, a playground? You know, what would it be used for? So is that. An acceptable timeframe or is this something that commission wants to see outside of the budgetary process?
No, just as long it is, as it goes in to be considered. So under the budgetary. Constraints, that is acceptable.
City attorney had a comment. City attorney, Petria Bingo, say you had a.
Yeah, I think these need to come as line items now.
They, they do. Okay to start here, but just keep in mind that our real property discussions preliminaries. Prelimarily also start an executive session and the agreement would go before, so I would just caution that we need to be. Our intentions to do things and no meetings that we do in executive session for reasons, but we can certainly bring these back as action items as well.
Mr. Mayor, I got to comment on that real quick. Mr. Mayor. I got to, I got to comment on that. That particular piece of property that Commissioner McDonald's talking about down at the old ball fields. If, if I remember right, it's, it's probably been, Jason may remember this, but. It's been numerous years. It was right when the hospital had declared bankruptcy up there over that lawsuit. You know, remember all that little. Deal going on. We were in negotiations with them at that time, I think, to purchase that piece of property and build a park down there. It was Commissioner Ferguson at the time in that district. So, you know, this, this has been talked about in the past, so just a little bit of history on that for that piece of property.
That apartment complex was another negotiation.
Yes, there, there was, there was. Yeah, yep.
Any other comments, city manager Brian Caesar?
My, my last question, and this goes back to the phased plan to have commission meetings in person. One commissioner is saying definitely in person. Another commissioner is saying, no, want to do it over Zoom. So in looking at any type of phased plan. I really need to know which commissioners. Or how many commissioners would be wanting to meet in person versus how many would not. Participate in that until the state reached, whether it's green, turquoise, whatever color.
Ryan, if I could, if I can offer a comment on that, there's a couple of things being asked here that are kind of out of the norm of. You know, our procedures getting consensus without it being an actual agenda item. So let's just ask the clerk to put it on the next. Agenda and we can have the discussion. Because the decision to meet in Zoom was not a decision by the commission. It was a decision by the city manager and the clerk. So if we're going to come out of it and there's going to be some contention, let's. See, my dogs are really upset at this.
Okay, we'll bring it forward as I'm next, next meeting.
Okay, but I do want to say something. I do want to say something. I I want to be clear that I I agree with Commissioner Rudden that this is getting old. I don't know that we should be, and maybe we're not going against the public health order by meeting in person. My concern is that we may not have employees that feel comfortable doing. I I just want to, I want to make sure that 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 is, do you see what I'm saying? Like, it's not.
We can.
And we can discuss it at the next meeting. Now, we can, we can discuss it at the next meeting. I just want to be clear that that it's, I'm not for against, I am for doing, you know, I I want to make sure that that it doesn't sound like that, oh, yeah, let's just go against the public health order and that's not because I I do think that we need to be mindful of the fact that we're going to be fined if we're not careful. So and we are talking about taxpayer dollars, so we do need to be careful with that. But yes, I agree, maybe we can discuss it more and and make it an an item on the next. At the next meeting.
Comments? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any staff member or commissioner like to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Oh, moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner.
Second.
Then agenda, I have a second from Commissioner Baldwin. Will clerk please call the roll?
Jason Baldwin?
My dogs say aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Rarden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Boss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item, we'll move on to new business, item eight, consider and act upon the proposed phase of the Elmwood Family Recreation Recreation Center opening and personal changes, I'm sorry, personnel change. We have with us tonight, we have Heather with us tonight.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Commissioners and City Manager. Like you said, I'm Heather Case Bolt, I'm the manager over at the Elmwood Family Rec Center. I've already met with the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Community Services Director and Finance Director, and they've given me their approval to present this proposed AFRC opening plan to you guys. So I have a slideshow that the clerk is supposed to run through for me because I had some technical issues, but feel free to ask questions at any time and I'll take questions at the end as well. All right, so next slide. So first, as you guys have already been talking about tonight, you know, people I think are getting ready to get out there and do some things. I've done research and in the current public health order, we are allowed to operate on some of our facilities in limited capacity, which I'll go into further depth on the following slides. But this is kind of our idea, my idea of how it will help our community. We want to gradually open our pool and our youth program. Want to make sure we follow all the guidelines, keep everybody safe, of course, like you guys are talking about, but we want to be able to provide those fitness opportunities and some recreation opportunities for the public because it has been here and I think people are ready to start getting out there and doing some some activities safely. So we'll look at our three areas, pool program opportunities, I'll go in depth on each of these later, but so we have the Elmwood Public Schools swim team, potential for lap swim and fitness swim sessions. And then later on, we can look at some swim lessons and then if the governor allows at some point like she did previously, small group recreational swim sessions and that'll be in the the later colors. For the youth programs, we would like to look at offering a summer program, so nothing after school, but looking at getting back to a a summer program to kind of help parents out. Small group sport camps, we can do things that are non-contact, they are allowing youth programs one to four, I believe ratios right now. We can do some classes, including baby babysitter training and arts and crafts classes. And then last series, park rentals, these kind of are varying stages of what we could open up, but we'll talk about park pavilions, the sports fields, and then any help with special special events. So something to note is pool programs and rentals will provide opportunities for all ages. The youth programs will, of course, provide most benefit to the youth, but it will also help out working parents and guardians because it provides some form of childcare in the summertime for them. We feel like this is a win-win situation because even if we stay in red, we can still operate in limited capacity and then we won't incur any additional costs because the program, the programs won't run unless we hit the appropriate levels to to run them. So our budget won't be impacted because we won't run the programs unless we absolutely can. Uh, next slide. So budget impact, we're we're looking at potentially adding back some staff, which I'll talk to you about next, but for our personnel to be able to reopen, there won't be any significant budget impact because I've had two full-time positions go vacant and with the savings that I have for the remainder of this fiscal year, it will more than cover the need for the and cost for the additional positions. As far as program costs, those are budgeted at the beginning of each fiscal year. So we actually have significant expense savings already because the facility has been closed majority of this fiscal year. And then program revenue, we're hoping to bring in about twenty-eight thousand from the pool and the youth programs and then potentially maybe a little more if we get to do park rentals as well. Next slide. So our necessary personnel changes. In order to run the youth and the pool, we are needing to add back five seasonal positions. As you know, last year, all of the part-time positions were taken out across the city, but I'm needing to add back some of those seasonal positions, including three lifeguards. Estimated start would be late April, earlier if possible, just depends on the hiring process through HR. So we could get, as soon as we can get them on, we can start offering some things through the pool if we get those lifeguards. And then we would also need two seasonal youth staff for estimated start training in early May in order to be able to provide the summer program when school ends at the end of May. So next slide. So talking about the pool in depth, we're looking at a limited pool opening mid-March. As it says there, March programming would be the swim team only. We do have it, have had a JPA with the high school and they've used our pool every season. So we can cover the swim team without any additional staff because my aquatics director is a certified lifeguard as well as their head coach. And I think about three or four of their team members are also certified lifeguards, many who have worked with us. So we can meet the state's requirements of having two lifeguards on deck at any practice through my staff and the swim team's staff. So that's why we could operate the swim team starting in March. In April, assuming we get those lifeguards hired on as soon as possible, then we would also have the swim team, but then we could start doing the fitness and lap swim sessions. We've offered them usually in the morning, you know, six to seven in the morning for about an hour and a half and then around lunchtime. Those are adult only, so it would only be open to.
Only twenty-five.
Adults for fitness swim, basically. And then in May, we would look to progress to adding back some swim lessons. Our swim lessons are typically small classes anyway. Right now, they would have to run one to four, but I think the max that we usually have is six kids in a class anyway. So we could operate it in red and then in in anything higher than that as well. Next, oh, yeah, at the bottom, it is important to note, according to the most current health order, the pool is able to operate in at twenty-five percent occupancy, which would be about a hundred and twenty. We never reached that number. We never are full capacity in the pool, just because we usually don't have enough staff to fully max it out. And obviously because of social distancing and sanitation and practices practices and stuff, we wouldn't, we wouldn't come close to one-twenty, but we obviously can can operate even in the red right now, so. Next slide. So for our youth program, like I said, we're looking to start the program mid-May for training as far as getting that additional staff back on and then the program would start after school is out at the end of May. Right now, we're thinking of eight, maybe some AM and PM camps. We'll see, I guess, what color we're at as it gets closer. But that way we could accommodate more families in the community if we did half-day camps. Like I said, we'd also do the the small group sport camps and then babysitter and arts and crafts classes, we could do unlimited. Youth programs right now are allowed to operate as well with a one to one to four ratio. So we make sure in everything we follow all the COVID safe practices. The state has guidelines for all businesses to follow and then, of course, we'd follow the CDC guidelines as well. And then basically our participation numbers will be expanded depending on what color we're in. So if we're in yellow by mid-May, then we can look at doing a ratio of one to ten. We typically don't go above one to fifteen, depending on the ages. Typically, we're about one teacher to every twelve kids. So, you know, we can operate in red with small numbers, but obviously the bigger numbers are going to allow us to accommodate more participants. Next slide. So park rental openings, potentially we can look at offering some as early as April. It's really going to depend on when we hit yellow. Because the numbers are one to five, that's pretty small for for mass gatherings, there's not a lot you can do with those numbers. We can look at operating some of them at the one to ten in the yellow or sorry, the ten in the yellow. As far as sports fields and, you know, leagues starting up, I think we're going to have to wait till we get to the higher colors of green or turquoise because those numbers go to twenty and then turquoise goes to one-fifty, so we can accommodate lots of teams practicing at the same time and multi-field usage. And even, you know, in the green, we can go one to twenty, that accommodates most sports teams as far as coaching and kids and stuff, but one to ten, there's not very many sports that have teams that are smaller than than ten kids. So probably won't get to open sports fields up until you get to higher higher colors on the on the scale. Um, next slide. So basically, I'm asking for commission approval to proceed with our phase opening plan and more importantly, the required staff that I need in order to do so. So I appreciate your consideration and let me know if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions of Heather? Mr. Rudden?
I just, if if anybody doesn't have any comments, I'd just like to make a motion we approve item eight as she has written.
What Commissioner McDonald, did you want to make comments?
I just, I didn't hear anything about the, you know, even though they're opening the pools, my only concern is, and it's not really a concern, I'm just asking because I don't know, the water conditions, does, I mean, if somebody had it and maybe tested negative and was in the water, is that a, is that a concern? Because I'm not aware.
The the kind of chemicals that we use in the pool are basically so strong that they kill most everything. As far as I know, our maintenance and my aquatics director are not concerned, they think that it will be able to handle anything, including COVID in the water.
If there's no further discussion, I have a motion from Commissioner Rudden on considering item eight under new business. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Jason? Oh, Dusty, I I have a second from Commissioner Wright. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather, great presentation.
Thank you very much.
It'll be nice to have some normal.
Yeah, we're going to try.
We'll move on to item nine, appointments to boards and committees. The Elmwood Promotion Board, there is one vacancy and that is the tourism representatives. This vacancy is due to the expiring term of Christopher Orwell. And Christopher Orwell has asked to be reappointed to his third term. And I would, if there's no objection from the commission, I'm going to reappoint Mr. Orwell to that position. And he is so appointed and I want to thank Christopher for all the service that he's done in the past. We'll move on now to the Housing Authority Advisory Board has two vacancies, there's been no applications received on that one. So anybody interested in the Housing Authority Advisory Board, there are, there's some openings. Mayor's Committee on Aging, two vacancies, these vacancies are due to the expiring terms of Shirley Dakin and Barbara Joe Tess, following individual is interested in being appointed, being reappointed and that being Shirley Dakin. I've reviewed her resume and if reappointed, this would, this would be her second term and I have reviewed her her resume and if there's no objection from the commission, I'm going to appoint Shirley to that position for her third, for her second term. Shirley is so appointed and Shirley, thank you for your past service. Planning a zoning commission, one vacancy, this vacancy is due to the expiring term of Raymond Harris, following individual is interested in being reappointed, this would be his second term. I've also reviewed the application from Raymond and if there's no objection, I'm going to reappoint him to that commission. He is so appointed. Thank you, Mr. Tess for your, Mr. inheritance for your past service and on that commission. Move on to the Senior Volunteer Program Advisory Council, there's four vacancies, these vacancies are due to the expiring term. So I'll say this, well, Venezuela, Paul Ferret, Stephen Butler and Marina de Morales, Harlan? I'm sorry, Morales. We have, I think we have one person that has applied to be reappointed to that one and that is Ms. Venezuela. Be her second term and I've reviewed her application and if there's no objection from the commission, I'm going to reappoint her to that position for a second time. She is so appointed and I want to thank her for her service on that commission. All we have there. So if there's no other business for the good of the city, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
I have a motion for Commissioner Ridden to adjourn. Do I hear a second? I have a second from Commissioner McConnell. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.